Okay, so I'll open it up. Uh, let's get out at six o'clock, I'll open up our special, whatever we have, our special meeting, City of Guthrie Workshop.
Wonderful. Number one is public comments. I have not received anything. We'll move on to number two, is a discussion regarding agenda items. And if you'll take a look at this evening's agenda items, there is one that I would like to discuss, and Andy with the Square Dancers Association.
Square Dancers.
Club, is in attendance, if we would like to ask him questions. Upon arrival in the city, I've taken a look at some of our contracts. It has come to my attention that there is a family living inside a, the Square Dancers, what is commonly also known as the Girl Scouts cabins. There is a family that is there. It is in violation of the existing contract, so I bring it back to council, to either, this evening to either make an amendment to the contract, to null the contract, to do whatever it is that you like. In the contract, it states that the use of the property can only be used for square dancing, and that the Square Dancing Club is not allowed to sublease. There is not, after speaking with Andy, there is not necessarily a lease, nothing formal.
Yeah, we do not charge them rent.
And no rent is charged. The family does pay utilities back to the Square Dancing Club, because the Square Dancing Club is the, is the name of the customer on the utilities. And then they work it out between the family and the Square Dancing Club to reimburse for utilities. I bring it to you, the, the interesting part of, of that location is it is a, not a very visible area, so I, I could bring it to your attention that, yes, it would be in the city's interest to have, if we had someone living there, they do take a look at the property, there is someone there active. It's, if y'all know where I'm talking about, Highland Park area. So I bring it to you, it is in violation of contract right now. My job is to manage contracts for you that you agree upon, and when I see them out of order, then I bring them back to you to make suggestions or take, take suggestions from you on how you would like to proceed. We can either wait to do that in the agenda, or we can have Andy talk to us a little bit about the situation at that location, if you like.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, I would too.
Sure, sure, Andy, come on up. We're gonna pitch a right here, it's very comfortable, very comfortable chair.
It's called a hot seat.
You're not in the hot seat. Why does everybody say that?
I have the button over here.
So, um, there's a trap door. No. So, Andy and I have spoken, and the last I heard, we were gonna see if that residence, if, if that family was gonna stay or go, or...
It looks like they're gonna stay for the time being. It's, it'll probably be another year down the road before they'll, they're trying to buy their own house, but their money's not saving up as much as they would like. We had that couple in there primarily to help them out. They were newlyweds, and already had one child when they moved in. And we were just trying to help them, because he was working at a minimum wage job and wasn't making much. So, we had him move in there, so that he could take care of the place, basically. We gave him a lawn mower, we gave him a weed eater, he takes care of the yards. Except for that big backyard, we take care of that, and everything. But, uh, he's there, hopefully keep people from vandalizing the place. We were without a residence there for some time. And at that time, another caller who was responsible for the clubhouse, left his equipment there, and he went up there to call the dance and didn't have any equipment. Somebody smashed in the door, walked off with all of his equipment, speakers, microphones, the whole nine yards. So, uh, it's advantageous to us to have someone in that apartment to where they can watch over the place.
How long have they been there, or when did, when did they move in?
Oh, almost three years ago.
It doesn't sound to me like they're letting really rent free, if they're helping secure and take care of the place, and it sounds like a beneficial relationship, that you're happy with it.
We are. Uh, we went up there one, one Thursday night for a business meeting, and he was out in the yard cutting sheet rock. Looking, what's wrong? He's, all the ceiling fell into the little kid's room, says, we're fixing it back up. It's no cost to us. So, whatever needs to be fixed, he fixes.
Does it sound like he takes advantage of the situation?
No, he doesn't. He's, he's a real good young man and young lady. They've since had another child, and so, that's the reason they're looking for their own home, 'cause that one's pretty small.
When did that contract come up, or?
Twenty seventeen, seventeen.
No, it's right around the corner.
Well, and to clarify, so if a hundred and fifty a year?
Yes, sir.
It just seems to me that a hundred and fifty a month would be cheap, even if you're doing the maintenance, you know?
Well, that, I don't know.
That's a city asset.
Uh, we've had a cot cabin since the late nineties, I guess, someplace long in there.
Ninety-two, the first one I found.
Since ninety-two. And it's, it's always been around the hundred, hundred and fifty dollars a year lease agreement. Now, I've not been involved with the club that long. I didn't start until two thousand and four.
Well, didn't we run into a situation before with the, of the lake property that was getting sublet, or?
Yep.
The lake, yeah.
It's a city.
We actually leased it to that.
But that was a lease.
No, we were a lease, it wasn't a subletting.
It was to an employee, it'd be the same thing, to take care of the property.
It sounds like he's got a good deal going with somebody that's willing to live in a place like that, and here he fixes it up on his own. I mean, don't rock the boat.
Well, how, how much was our lease of the lake property, approximately?
Uh, it was different, because it was a straight lease.
Yeah, it was a city.
A hundred a month or something like that, I don't even know.
I think it was a hundred a month.
Which is like ten times what this is, so even on that deal.
Yes. If I might say something, though, hasn't the Square Dance Club kept that property in good repair? They, I think it was not very well taken care of when they got it. They've done a lot of work to it. We did a walkthrough on that about four years ago, and they've done some wonderful upkeep of the property.
Is it central air at each?
No, the air is by window units, but it is central heat. It's a very old unit, though, and that's the reason I'm glad that couples in there, because he works for integrity heating air.
I think it was six years ago when they painted the inside and outside of the building.
Well, we just painted the outside.
Did you do that again?
Last year.
That's what I was thinking. And then, didn't they do some major work on the restroom facility in there?
Yeah, they've, they've actually put in all new water lines for all the waters. They've put in a wood floor that doesn't give anymore.
Yeah, I thought that they had done some major, major work.
There's been quite a bit done, so.
So, what, what staff, what staff is requesting is, because it is currently in violation of contract, that during the, the regular agenda, you, you have some options, and Randall, help me out on this one, we can amend the contract to allow Section Eight to reflect a, basically a sublease, whether or not there's, there's money involved or not, that's one way to do it. Or in Section Three, it talks about purpose and use in the contract. The purpose currently is solely for square dancing, square dancing lessons, and incidental purposes, and no other purpose. So, somewhere in that contract, we could amend it to allow...
I have a paragraph.
Goes on to say, unless authorized.
You know, housekeeper to live there, rent.
We do hold the insurance on it as a, as a city, we do have it insured.
Well, that was my next question, is that with another family? I mean, we're kind of exposing our liability there.
I provide, under my calling contract, I provide a million dollars insurance.
And it covers their, that covers the family that's there?
And you pay for it, or we pay for the insurance?
I pay for it.
You pay for the insurance?
We insure the facility.
We insure the facility. We, we, the city has insurance on the facility. The contents, we do not have insurance.
How much is the insurance for the facility? How much does that cost us?
It's under the O-MAG package for coverage.
Thirty facilities.
Oh, it's under the O-MAG coverage.
It's overall, sort of a break up.
They have comprehensive public viability insurance and comprehensive property damage insurance.
Well, I, I know that. I'm just saying, if something were to happen with their family in the, you know, if they...
The city would be liable.
Right, we've got some liabilities, and hang out there.
Randall, would you like to answer personal?
Well, I mean, I think we have liability insurance through our umbrella at the city. Andy has liability for the Square Dance Club. Between the two, I would think we would be covered.
Well, I, I mean, I'm just saying that the whole...
And we've got tort, you know, we're covered by tort claim law anyway, and there's our exposures under tort claims.
So, if, I guess I'm just throwing this out, if the, if the people that are there catch the place on fire and it burns to the ground?
Through our coverage, we're covered. Our, our insurance carrier will pay for the building.
Whatever.
Five thousand dollar deductible on that, the building, right?
Okay.
I guess my only concern is just that we, as a city, don't have a whole lot of money. You know, we're always talking about, we don't have money, yet, this is a hundred and fifty a year. I could see somebody working there, even if we, even if it was an awesome deal, a hundred bucks a month for that, for that family is incredibly cheap, even if you add maintenance to the property. Um, is it a hundred bucks, pretty cheap?
Um, I did ask a, a local Realtor that sits on the chamber board, what a going rate. He said if it had a functioning bathroom and a living space, no matter what the square footage, seven hundred dollars is kind of a going rate. We do have relatively high rents in town.
It just doesn't seem...
If you're gonna pay seven hundred a month, you won't live in the Girl Scout cabin.
I, I agree with that. He was just kind of giving a comparison of square footage.
But for three hundred, you might.
Three hundred.
A month. You know what I'm saying? I just feel, I just feel bad and guilty that, not guilty, because I didn't, I didn't do this contract, but I just feel like, we're always broke, we're always asking for money, yet, a hundred and fifty a month, we're giving a whole lot of money away. We could actually be getting, let's say, a thousand a year, back to other programs, um, if we charge, still, a hundred bucks a month is incredibly cheap, even for maintenance.
I would agree with you to the point that a hundred and fifty probably doesn't cover the insurance costs of...
A hundred and fifty a year.
A year? That's a year!
That's what I mean. A hundred and fifty a year probably doesn't cover the insurance costs.
And that's coming from the Square Dance Club, not this individual. This individual's not paying anything.
But I mean, if we're gonna let them sublease, we could say, look, it's gonna be this much, and that they need to give us a certain percentage or whatnot, I don't know. But, it just seems like we are always hurting for money, and it seems like we're, we can't just give away assets. I mean, taxpayers bought that facility, and you know, are we, so we're just gonna give that stuff, we might as well give all sorts of stuff away for pennies on the dollar. You know, I think that's not, it's not responsible for us to do that, to, you know. And, and I don't have a problem with the Square Dancers, I think, just, but if you're gonna sublease, that's not Square Dancers paying. You know what I'm saying? Does this make any sense? It just doesn't seem like anybody else is very concerned about this.
Do the Square Dancers have a pay to lease it? I'm just asking.
They pay a hundred and fifty dollars a year based upon the lease.
I got you.
I didn't set that amount, so I don't know.
Right. None of us said it either, apparently.
Uh, this contract was signed six months ago.
Six months ago?
October, October.
I remember it.
No, we did, what we didn't know is that, we didn't know that we have a sublet tenant.
I didn't know that part.
And I don't disagree with what John's positioning is. I mean, I think if we were to require him to pay us a hundred dollars a month, it's twelve hundred dollars a year, it's pretty darn cheaper, and...
And I'm saying if they sublease, I mean, if they're not subleasing at the time, you know, we can't expect that, but...
Well, we're not theoretically subleasing, because we don't charging any rent. We have them to pay the utilities, and that's all. They primarily use all the utilities. We use the cabin three times a month, under normal circumstances. Once for a business meeting on the first Thursday night of the month, and then the second and fourth Saturday nights of the month, we have to dance. That's the only time we use the, the facilities.
And you're saying they pay, they pay utilities?
They pay the utilities, yes. And then, of course, whenever we start lessons in September, we use it two nights a week for about three months.
I, I just, I could see, there's a lot of very low, uh, income people who would jump at that opportunity, a hundred and fifty a year. They'd jump, please let me work here, and that'd be cheaper than the, or, you know, we have Section Eight housing not far from me. They pay a lot more than a hundred and fifty a year. I'm sorry, and they have same, same size of houses, they really do. They pay a lot more. They, they pay anywhere from a hundred and fifty to, uh, four hundred dollars a month for a very small room. I've been there, I've, I've walked that area, and so, it just seems to me fair to say that we should not give away assets. I think it's irresponsible for, it's our responsibility to taxpayers.
So you're asking that we redo the contract for accounts for some?
Yeah, with account, maybe you say, hey, if you're gonna sublease, then we need to have a certain base...
Well, you could put in, you could put in the Square Dance Club's lease, that they can sublease, or they can let a resident occupy and require that it be at a minimum rent per month. If that occurs, then that rent go to the city.
Yeah.
Now, 'cause this is a little bit of a different situation, granted, I don't know anything about the house, but the rent's cheap, but I don't have people coming to my house three times a month, square dancing and holding business meetings. So, there's a little bit of difference.
I would love for somebody to do that, if all I have to do is a hundred and fifty a year. I, I would deal with that as an obligation, you know?
But I might. Y'all wanna come on down?
We're gonna start my walk.
Yeah. They can, they can meet my, my living room if they wanna, if, you just make a hundred and fifty a year for my mortgage, so, you know, I think that's an awesome deal.
Well, I think we're, I think what you're saying is that we just maybe increase the Square Dancers.
Yeah.
Price up to...
Well, you can either increase the Square Dancers price, or you can say their price is this, and if you lease it to someone, or not lease, but if you let someone occupy it as their home, then you must collect at least X a month for the city.
So, they could collect, let's say, three hundred dollars, and the city would put a minimum of a hundred. Is that true or not true?
You could do it however you want to do it. If they wanted, if they wanted to collect three, I mean, I think you need to put a minimum on there for what you would require for someone to live there, while the Square Dance Club has the lease. And whatever that minimum is, you would get. And if you wanna say we get it all, you can do that. I mean, if you wanna say three hundred a month, if someone lives there, you could do that. That's your call. It can be a hundred, it can be any number, it can be a hundred, it can be three hundred. And then how you divide it up is, again, your call. If you want, you know, the Square Dance Club pays their rent to the city, and if you want the tenant, resident tenant, to pay the rent to the city, and, and they, I guess, will pay the utilities.
Uh, I think the cleanest way is to increase what the Square Dancers earn, and obviously they've gotta bring that money to the table, if you will. Then we're not having to go after the tenant directly.
The lease doesn't have to be the landlord to lease it, make sure good people come in there when those people leave.
And that's part of it, too, is...
That's a pain in the butt.
You're losing. Is that up to the square dancing, or?
Well, if they charge a little more, then they can make a little money, you know?
Or if you didn't know money, you would change the use clause.
But that's what we're giving them, that opportunity by subletting. That's the point of that. So, you know, if we had...
Well, they're gonna have to let you know if they sublease to a resident, and give you a copy of that lease, so you're gonna know what they're paying them.
So, what's your thoughts on this?
Right now, main thing I came here for was to get the approval of the family to stay there. The main thing I did, 'cause I don't wanna kick them out in the streets. And, uh, if it requires additional monies from them, that's something I'll have to go to them to ask, because I don't know. And, an increase for the club to pay extra money per month would take a vote of the club. Now, whenever Serena and I talked, I told her, you know, that if we didn't have that family in there, we're gonna close the doors and terminate the lease, simply 'cause we cannot afford to keep up the maintenance if people keep breaking in there and tearing everything up.
Right.
And it's up there all by itself, nobody's watching it.
It's real hidden in there. And it's, they could back up an eighteen-wheel and take off with it. Nobody'd ever know.
It's insured.
So, my main concern was to get the approval to get, leave the family there right now.
Well, can we move that, there would be a motion specifically, but to direct Serena to negotiate with them some kind of contract, that, and maybe we can get some more information on what would be a fair price?
I'm gonna come and go for a fair price.
Okay.
I am.
Okay. Well, could we have you guys negotiate, figure out what's gonna go, maybe have them get some feedback from their organization, and then we can go back and forth?
Can we let it go to like a month-to-month lease, and like at the next, just a two-week, the next, maybe in those next two weeks, try to solve some of this, and at the next meeting, we...
Well, they're, I mean, technically runs to two thousand and seventeen right now. Of course, they, there's this problem of improper use.
What do you wanna do?
Technically, it's still under that five-year...
Well, I, I think, yeah, I think maybe what we're looking at here is...
We could terminate it if we had to and wanted to.
Is that what you're gonna do?
Unless anybody's saying they wanna do that right now.
No, I, I thought, I was interested about...
What you're gonna do, when this guy buys a house and moves out, are you gonna try to find someone else to move in there, or what do you do?
Yes, move, try to find somebody to take care of the grounds for us.
And the same sort of deal?
Basically, yes, sir.
So they have incentive to keep somebody there, so they can keep the facility open, so I think if we divide a fair price...
Decide what the residential rent you're willing to accept is, and see if their tenant can pay that.
How many square feet is that unit?
Pardon me?
How many square feet is that unit?
Well...
The little apartment?
The little apartment's small.
It's real small.
Five hundred square feet?
Five hundred square feet.
Maybe, maybe.
And no central heat and air?
And then, central heat and window units.
Well, I don't think they have central heat. I think they have heaters.
Heaters. And then there's the open space.
Yeah, the dance hall is centrally...
Well, I, I mean, I guess I'm looking at, I mean, maybe what we do is we don't make the decision, and we're already in violation of a lease, if it comes up to the next council meeting. But what I'd like to know is if they're willing or can be willing to do a hundred dollars a month, if you would, an additional lease, that's only twelve hundred dollars for the year, and then how they, how we maneuver that through. You know, I think that's being very generous, to be quite honest with you, in this situation. I mean, I know we certainly don't wanna put anybody out on the street, by any means, and, and I think we're gonna be flexible, but I'd like to give you the opportunity to, to discuss it with them and say, look, the council's position is, we, we gotta do some...
Why don't we go out there and look at that hole in the wall?
I'm saying that, I'm not arguing that, I'm just saying is that we gotta...
They got a good deal going. They got somebody there, and it's helping the city, because nobody's ripping the place off out there and destroying it. And that's what would happen if they lost anybody that would stay in that little hole.
I think somebody will stay for a hundred a month. You can find a lot of people who will go stay for a hundred a month for a little thing like that.
Boy, that's tough. That's greedy. I'm sorry. I just don't buy it. I'm sorry.
I'd like to find...
I think the man is right.
I would challenge you to find a place anywhere in town for that rate, even without central heat and air, and that's small. I'd love for you to find, I mean, Serena knows...
Do you wanna do it to people like that? Are you that greedy?
No, but I know that we have to...
Well, have a heart, of course.
Generate some money for the city, and your responsibility to taxpayers.
I think, I think it's helping the, uh, uh, Territorial Square Dance Club, and they're helping us by renting that little building for a couple of days a week, and they've got somebody that is gonna take care of the place and live in a little hole in the wall. Let's be satisfied, we got that.
I'd like for us to do a hundred a month, um, for a twelve-month lease, and we can revisit it, um, within a year, and just see how that went. Were we able to keep somebody in there? Just my thought.
Okay. You're welcome to make a motion during the, uh, meeting tonight, and y'all vote on that, and then we'll, I'll be happy to meet with Andy and, and see if that's feasible for the tenants, and then we could come back.
Well, yeah, I also wanna be very clear, this isn't an issue where we're saying this is gonna happen, either. I think we just wanna give you the opportunity to, to discuss with the family first.
Sure.
Uh, Councilman Hazelwood has already determined that we've already prejudged it, it's a done deal. It's not. I, I wanna be clear about that. I just think it'd be an opportunity to discuss it with them, and you may come back and they may say, there's not a chance we can, there's not even a way we can do that. And I think this council is, is empathetic. And this Councilman Hazelwood thinks otherwise.
Well, I don't know their, their financial situation, so I'm gonna have to go back with them. I know the club's financial situation, and we can't handle it.
Right. Well, and that's what I'm saying. I think I just wanna give you that luxury, that opportunity to do that.
Well, the two of you together handle it well, and I think you're doing a good job, and we oughta leave it alone.
Yeah, we're incorporated as a nonprofit.
That's right. That's right.
And so, you know, what dues we charge goes right out the window, whenever we...
Well, I don't think having a hundred bucks a month, if you pass it along to a subleasee, is gonna cost the club a penny. You do exactly what you're doing today.
It is, it is if you're a poor family.
Well, and like I said, I want you to have that opportunity to share with them, and then, and report back to us, 'cause I think that's, that'll give us a little bit more of an informed decision.
Would we table that decision?
I'd like to see us table that decision until...
And then I wanted, because I want y'all to understand my job, is that if you're in, if we're in violation of a contract, then I do bring it to y'all's attention. So, that, so we, uh, public record, we are in violation of the contract currently, so y'all would have to make a decision at some point, so we can table it.
Yeah, and I think we'll make a decision on the next council meeting, but I think that gives us plenty of time. It's two weeks until we meet again, at the end of this call.
That is the point, is that we have a violation, that we have to address.
Sure. So, whether or not it's money or not, you could address it by saying, sure, they can rent it to whoever. It doesn't have to be, the, the contract needs to be amended to reflect that decision.
And we could do that tonight, and say, we could express that they can't sublet it, I guess, tonight's meeting.
You could.
Yeah, you could. I mean, if that's what you wanna do, if you, if you wanna determine the value, if that's the consensus of the, for a majority, then you need, you ought to put it off and discuss it with the tenant.
Well, and I'd like you, I'd like to get that feedback from you, you know, I think that this, I think that this group is empathetic. Uh, we're, we're here to listen. I mean, we under, we're understanding folks, and so, I'd like to hear that feedback directly from you or from them, to be quite honest with you. That's my, that's my...
If, if we need to bring him up here, I'll make those arrangements.
Well, what do you?
I have a heater out somewhere, we could do.
He's, he's a very good young man, and always willing to help, so. We had some trees fall over, and he says, if you need help, I'm ready. So, fortunately, we got a tractor to do the work for us.
Any other further questions regarding, thank you very much, Andy, for being here.
All right, that's all.
Thank you.
Not nearly that hot in that seat, is it?
Not a hot seat. That's right. Um, if there's none others, I also, if I can allow Chief Hartland to speak briefly about the tower, just so that y'all understand what's, um, what's going on with, with that agenda item.
What this is, is we're kind of administering this for not only a backup communication system for our department, but also the majority of the volunteer departments in the county. Our dispatchers here at the PD dispatch for about seventy-five percent of the departments in the county. This will afford them the opportunity to have a lot better communications coverage than what they have now. Um, there's no city funds being expended on this, but we do need your approval to execute the lease with Oklahoma State University, since they are the owners of the tower.
Pretty simple.
Okay, all right. That was easy.
Don't bring her.
They're using line-of-sight communication now, and this will enable them to use a repeater, where they'll have a lot better signal strength everywhere in the county.
Yeah, that's a big help, isn't it?
It will be, very much so.
Um, seeing no other questions, the only other item that y'all may wanna, uh, uh, talk about is the, the O-MAG. Um, there is a, a position to serve on the Board of Trustees. Uh, I'm not aware that the City of Guthrie has ever had a representative from council to serve.
Didn't anyone do that? Was it, or was the insurance group, or what was it?
That's another, oh, I'm...
I've never done it.
Yeah, do you?
Well, I was nominated.
Oh, you're nominated, okay.
And this, um, this one, uh, you would actually have to, I know, you, you have to run, basically. You're, you're placed on a ballot, so this is just to get a name on the ballot, and...
Z, you wanna try again? I'm not, I nominate Z.
Okay.
I nominate Sherry. That's just gonna be a pain in the butt.
Okay.
Can we not, Trey, you won't be nominated?
Oh, I got enough yard signs to go around.
Come on, be a sport, come on.
That's right. Um, so, just during the, the meeting, if y'all would like to bring a name forward, and we can vote on that in the meeting, I, I'd be happy to help you do the biographical sketch, take your pretty picture, tell people you enjoy Long Strolls on Beach, or whatever it is that you want in your biography, I'd be happy to.
Should I be helping?
You're a Gemini, I...
No.
No.
That might hurt you.
Since we got a few minutes, can we discuss something for the future?
Oh, I'll go, I'll move right to that. Any other items today on the agenda? All right, let's go to request for future items.
Okay. I would like to ask each city council member sitting here tonight, and I want your real opinion of what you think of what I'm about to say. I have talked to some people I have talked to some people down in Norman, Oklahoma, that they have what they call the Norman Endowment Fund, and uh our city attorney, I'm sure, is very up on endowment funds. You know how they work. You're, you're real sharp on that.
No, I'm not real sharp on that.
And I have certain endowment.
But Randall, what basic bottom line is, in Norman, Oklahoma, they have the Norman Endowment Fund for Arts, and it works real good. They get the big donations from Sandridge and all the big boys. When the Pollard is called up for someone to donate like that, the first thing they ask is, do you have the Guthrie Endowment Fund for Arts? Well, we don't. What I'm asking each one of you is, if we could come up with enough public money for the city to have the Guthrie Endowment Fund for Arts, and we'll have the first money donated to put into it, would you go ahead and make an election date? Or, well, I don't know if, I don't know, we have to do it to election to the people or not, do we?
Well, not if you're just gonna raise private funds.
Well, yeah, that's what I wanna do. And have a start, our, this city council, not the next one, but have us be the city council that stands up for the arts in Guthrie and for the Pollard Theater, to have enough common sense here to start an endowment fund, the first time, the Guthrie Endowment Fund of Arts.
We are off agenda if you're asking this to be placed on an agenda?
No, I just wanna know their opinion tonight. I want each one of them to tell me, is that a good idea for Guthrie or not? I wanna know where you stand.
I think if, if you're gonna ask people, basically, you're asking them to tell you how they would vote if it came up, it probably ought to be.
Well, do you like it or do you not like it? You could say that much.
Well, I think they need to hear the full.
I'd like to have it on workshop before.
Yeah, I wanna hear all the ideas and everything behind it, cause you always have a lot of good ideas and whatnot, just from that in those two seconds. I'm, I have a great feeling I'm for it, but I would love to be educated.
Okay, so on our next one, we can go down to the nitty gritty. I can show you exactly how the Norman Endowment Fund works in Norman, how it was started and the whole nine yards.
What we really need is their articles and their bylaws.
Okay, I can get those. Okay.
So, so unclear, what Patty's referring to is privately fund an endowment? Cause she said.
Well, I thought that would work, Trey, because I didn't think the city would want to give city money for.
More chambers.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to, I wanna make sure I'm getting the right picture, because if that.
There's several ways we could do it.
Okay, and what you're, what you're referring to was a private endowment, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what it got.
But no, but I want it started by the city. I want, I wanna get the funds given to the city. I wanna see, when Sandridge calls you up and says, I wanna give you a hundred thousand dollars for your Pollard Theater, cause it's so good and you need the money, and what are you gonna, what are you gonna tell me when I say, do you have a Guthrie Endowment Fund for the Arts? What are you gonna tell me? No, we don't have one.
Go to Pollard and get a money.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's make Guthrie look good and put it on the map and do it right. It's what I'm trying to say.
Well, that was well beyond my question. I was just trying to determine whether or not it was a private endowment or a public.
Well, let's go beyond the question. We're gonna lose a million and a half dollars spent in the City of Guthrie if we lose the Pollard Theater. And that, you're shaking your head, you know I'm right.
We're, we're off topic for the agenda. What I'll do is put it on the next workshop and and we'll be happy to discuss it.
And let's fly with it. Let's really work hard toward that goal to put us up to the twenty-first century, and let's show that we love the Pollard, we love the small business, we love it all, and we can do this.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's against Pollard. I just wanted to hear what.
Well, a month ago, we didn't do anything, and I kept waiting and waiting and thinking we'd have another meeting to do something. Well, I'm ready to light the fire and let's do it.
I'm sorry, this is the first time I've heard about it, so I'd be happy to put on the next workshop for an endowment.
Mike Stirkel sat in that chair and discussed it with us. Don't you all remember?
I didn't hear endowment fund, I apologize. Um so I'd be happy.
I didn't hear that.
I'm sorry, it wasn't an endowment fund, it was to have.
There was no answer to him at all. What I'm saying is it's time for us to stand up for this city council, and let's try to work together to make it happen.
All right, we'll put that on the March nineteenth, March nineteenth. Any other items for future agendas?
I would, I would like to actually address sometime, and uh fences and animals. We need to address that issue.
What um, more specific, what, uh like current code or new code?
Like chickens?
Chickens and fences and things like that. Fence, there's kinds of fences that are good and that kind of.
So we could bring what our current maintenance code is on fences, okay?
Talk about where we need to go with it.
Sure. And then animals as far as livestock?
Yeah, like chickens in people's front yards.
Okay.
You're laughing.
I was.
My specifics here.
I will, I will be happy to pull what current ordinances that relate to those items, and we'll talk about it on March nineteenth, sure.
It's a good topic for you.
I like that one. Keep smelling my toes.
And I had um a concerned citizen come to me today, Barry Cogburn, and I, I don't know if he was able to talk to you today or not, but um I don't know how to address this on the agenda, but apparently Matt had written a letter, August fifteenth of twenty twelve, to the Oklahoma Military Department and said that the City of Guthrie is willing to be aggressive to make Oklahoma Military's Department investment in Guthrie an appealing endeavor. It's had to do with the eighty acres.
I've met with the Colonel.
Okay. Anyway, they um, they apparently had a top list of priorities of where they wanted to place themselves, and um I guess the first, their number one first pick, they declined in December, and so we were up to bat next, I guess, in February, and they talked to the city, and apparently there was a misunderstanding. And so I talked to Barry and I said, now Barry, let's talk about this, um let's make sure it's not hearsay or whatnot. And he said, well, it could have been miscommunication that the Oklahoma Military Department called or had a meeting or something, and they told us we were first up next, and that we basically told them we weren't interested anymore. So then today, what I did was, cause I always, I got caught up in that hearsay before, so I personally called the base commander, commander in Houston, Cantrell, the real property attorney for um the Oklahoma Military Department, and they said, in fact, yes.
And so we're waiting on an economic impact study that they're gonna provide in June?
Right, I I understand that, but my concern is that they don't, they didn't think we were interested. They thought the deal fell apart. And my concern is, I feel like maybe we need to put this on the agenda, so, and do something so they don't feel like that.
Sure, we told them we will always aggressively look for retail and economic impacts for that eighty acres. Right now, the return on investment is about three hundred and fifty-seven years um to do that project, so it wasn't something I was gonna bring to you until we get their economic impact study. Our numbers right now is not something I would recommend.
Okay, I'm just saying they thought we were out.
Well, they're, they're still in.
They thought we were saying no.
No, they, they told us.
No, no, I talked to them today, and they said no.
I'll clarify it. They told us they were gonna get us an economic impact study in June, so we were waiting on, on June.
Well, they said they communicated with you and some other folks, and that we told them that we weren't interested. The people from Oklahoma Military Department, their real property attorney and their base commander.
Sure, what was y'all like?
And so my concern is, we need to put it back on the agenda. I wanna hear more about it. I wanna learn more about it, and um I think they can do.
Would you like me to invite them? And the only reason we were waiting is they didn't have numbers.
I don't, I don't know what to do. I wanna make sure that they understand though that we are interested. I wanna make sure that they know the council's is, I would hope we would be educated on it more.
Right.
They think we're out, and I wanna make it clear to them, I don't know, I don't want that to be, I would, I don't know if the council needs to vote on it. We put it on agenda to vote on it, to let them know that we're interested, that we wanna see numbers, that we wanna, I just wanna make it clear to them that we are.
I'd be happy, because that is my job. I'd be happy if we're counseled. I can copy you on the email. I will inform them that we were under the impression, both Renee and I were in the meeting, we're waiting on economic impact numbers. I can run you what our economic impact numbers are.
I don't need that. I need these people to not go away from our community.
Sure, we don't want them either to do that. So we, they must have misunderstood. We said we will always aggressively look uh for, for opportunities on the eighty acres, so we actively recruit that. Uh I can copy y'all on an email that will, to let them know that, yes, we, we still want that economic impact study.
That'd be great.
My thoughts are on, it, it seems like you're saying that there's other possible opportunities that are better return for our community there.
Sure, sure there are.
I would like to get a little more information. If that's the case, and we might say no to these guys, you know, what are the better possibilities? What are we doing to, to approach those other possibilities? Are we pursuing those actively? What are we doing? So I would like to, on the workshop, maybe if we're gonna do that, maybe just talk about what, what is it that we, what are, what's our philosophy behind?
Sure, sure. We haven't adopted um policy, y'all have adopted a, a policy for economic development, and so I go by those guidelines with Cody Mosley, our Economic Development Director, so this wouldn't, it doesn't fit within those guidelines.
And we need a policy refresher.
Sure, sure. I can, I can bring that. As far as them, we're, we're waiting on economic impact numbers.
Well, they're waiting for it. They think we're out. They think we're not interested.
I will email them and, and remind them that we, we asked for those numbers, actually. I specifically asked for those numbers. Sure, I can do that.
And my, my, my other deal is to, I just wanna be aware of what's going on with that eighty acres. I wanna know, if you're telling us that there are other things of interest that are going, possible going there, I just wanna be abrasive and I wanna be afloat of it, because, so I, I understand that this possibly was a one dollar lease for the eighty acres, but it was five hundred to seven hundred people in our town every weekend it was to employ.
No, no. Those numbers are.
Okay, then they're telling me a lie. That's what you're saying. Okay, they don't know their information.
No, they, they gave us a sheet and I have it, and it's thirty-three full-time employees with one hundred on one weekend of the month, cause it's a reserve unit, so it's not every weekend. Um it's thirty-three employees full-time. The one hundred individuals, more than ninety percent of them will be commuting, so they're not.
I don't know what's going on. It's my concern.
And that's my job.
This is huge misunderstanding of people, and I would like it to be resolved.
Yeah, we have it in writing from them.
But they think we're out, so quit arguing with me. They think we're out. They think we're not interested.
I'm sorry, I just wanna make sure that nobody thought we had seven hundred people a weekend that.
Okay, they told me that's what they would bring to our community. I guess they misinformed us.
And all I'm saying is, it would be nice to get a policy refresher, and let's just kinda talk about the eighty acres. I think that combines what your thoughts are and, you know.
Sure, sure.
I'd like to know what are we trying to do, so I think that'd be great.
Sure. Good, good. We can do that. Workshop on the um, the or, the.
I always just think the eighty acres, I don't know what we're calling it otherwise. I've heard about their eighty acres last like three or four years. The eighty acres, that's all.
Which we do not notice, so, yeah. If that's it, you wanna join us?
Yep, we're joining.
There you go.